I'd like to call to order the November 18th, 2024 meeting. You can't hear, okay. Hold on just a second. Is our mics on?
Yep.
Can you hear now? Okay. So I'll repeat. Calling to order the November 18th, 2024 city council meeting. Please take the roll.
Bozen.
Here.
Simonson.
Here.
Voss.
Here.
Coleman.
Here.
Westergaard.
Here.
Mandelbaum.
Here.
Gatto.
Here.
We have a quorum.
Item number two is approving the agenda as presented and/or as amended. And tonight, number 29 is updated for the roll call on the regular agenda items 37 through 45. 37 has been updated, and it's going to continue to December 9th, 2024 council meeting. 45 is the updated speaker list.
Move approval.
Second.
There's been moved and seconded. Please vote.
Seven, yes.
Motion carries. The next item is approving the consent agenda items three through 36. For this one, Voss on number five votes no. 20, Simonson abstains. 24, Coleman would like to speak. 29, Simonson abstains.
Move approval.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Please vote.
Seven, yes.
Motion carries. Do we do a hearings first?
Do we do the hearings first?
It's considered, I don't think.
Hearings. We're going back.
We'll go back after the hearings, right?
Obviously, we go right in because they.
Yes.
Okay. The first, we'll go, we'll do hearings first. Item number 37. On request from GJC AM Group LLC, John Chang, Officer for the following regarding property located at 1419 Pennsylvania Avenue, to rezone the property from N3C Neighborhood District to limited N3C-2 Neighborhood District to allow reuse of the existing structure for duplex use and to continue to the December 9th, 2024 council meeting. Is there anyone wishing to speak to this? If not?
Second.
It's moved and seconded. Please vote.
Seven, yes.
Item 38, on the proposition to authorize an extension of an existing loan agreement with Motorola Solutions, Inc., Greg Brown, CEO, in which the principal amount is not to exceed $1,35,828 for the purpose of purchasing upgraded body worn camera equipment and related services. This is a council communication number 24-474. We accept your main comments from the general public. Two minutes per person to speak. Ten minutes maximum.
I see none, Your Honor. I'll move 38.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Please vote.
Seven, yes.
Motion carries. Item 39, on the proposed 2025 to 2029 consolidated plan, which includes the 2025 action plan for the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development. And number 24-476. Is there anyone wishing to speak to this? Please come forward. State your name. Or we'll bring, sorry. You'll have two minutes to speak.
Hello, my name is Heather Armstrong. I live at Ward, in Ward 2. And my concern about the HUD is that they don't pay enough for landlords to, to accept Section 8 vouchers. We need to raise, raise the allowance that they would pay for that. And they also need to raise the income limit for like a single person. They should raise it up to 50,000 for a single person and 75,000 for married couples because the USDA, they do something like that. And, and that way they can get housing. But the only problem with the USDA is that you gotta go where there's no transit or no way to get around those little towns. We need to raise the income so people can qualify for housing that normally would qualify because the rent here is getting sky high. And 95% of Americans cannot even afford a basic rent of even like 2,000. This is like in Chicago, 2,000 for one bedroom. So we need to raise the income limit to 50 instead of 36,000.
Thank you.
I don't see anything else, Your Honor. I'll move item 39.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Please vote.
Seven, yes.
Motion carries. Next item is number 40, on Birdland and Ashworth Pool Building Repairs. Reject all bids and close the hearing on the plans, specifications, form of contract documents, and engineer's estimate. Council Communication number 24-458. A general public may comment only to the plans, specifications, form of documents, engineer's estimate, or low bidder designation. Those will be the only comments to be considered. Jermaine, two minutes per person. Anyone wishing to speak to this?
Seeing none, I'll move item 40.
Can I just have a little bit of discussion?
Well, if you want to go ahead and second, then we can have discussion.
Okay, I'll second the motion and then discuss. I, I just wanted to talk about this because our swimming pools are so important to the kids that live in this community. And both Ashworth and Birdland, it would be, it would be really bad if, if there were ever a thought of closing these pools. I know that we have spent quite a bit of money already on repairs. And I also remember that we, as a council, decided that we were going to make that investment in our swimming pools. So I'm really disappointed to see that we're rejecting all bids. I, I guess my question is, is there some way we can get it down to where it would be acceptable without having to reject the bids? And if not, is it going to be back on our agenda in two weeks? I, I want some assurances that it's going to be back on the agenda to make those repairs and that we do fully plan on making the repairs so our kids have pools in the summer.
Yeah, so, Councilwoman, this is for a tuck pointing project for these two locations. We don't have the ability to negotiate these bids. The process doesn't allow us to do that. So we need to reject the bids and then come back with a new bid package. We may bid these out separately. We may wait till there's a better bidding environment where there might be more interest in this work. So I can't tell you at this moment when they would return, but there's every intent to bring back a new package for bidding.
Ken, is there, if we wanted to not reject the bids, if we said, let's go ahead and, and move forward? I mean, it's my understanding we're only about $300,000 between the two. That seems to be a pretty small amount to give our kids something to do during the summer.
I don't know what number you're referencing. The bid, the bid was 200. The.
Can I?
That's a different, that was not subject to this.
Can I suggest, I mean, I think we're all committed to making sure that these pools stay open. And my, my sense, and maybe it would help from, from other staff, but the rejection is that this is significantly more than you would expect from this work and that we can get a better value for taxpayers without impacting closing of these pools or delay. We'll still be able to get the work done and keep the pools up and operating is my understanding. But if, if we're wrong about that, I mean, this isn't going to jeopardize the pool. It's just making sure that we are good stewards of the taxpayer dollars. And sometimes we get bids for whatever reason because we bid it and we bid two different kinds of work together. And so people are uncomfortable bidding on that, so they bid it up. And that may be what has happened here. And I think we can just keep this moving forward to make sure these boats stay open, but not, not have to take a bid that requires us to spend.
I'll be respectful of that, but I'm, I'm just afraid that we're going to hear later on that the pools need to, one of the pools needs to be closed.
And, I mean, I'm saying today that I'm committed to both these pools staying open too.
Ms. Councilman Voss.
Right. So will there be time to bring this back before the council and still get the work completed before the start of the 2025 pool season?
I'm not certain. We'll, we'll check on that. But again, this is preventative maintenance on the exterior of the buildings that can wait until after the swim season. This does not jeopardize the ability to open these pools at all.
Okay. And, and the work on the, let's see, I think it's called the sand filter for Broad, for Birdland. That was already approved, awarded, and that's going to be done.
It's already.
It's already in progress. Okay.
It's been moved and seconded. Any other discussion? If not, please vote.
Seven, yes.
Motion carries. Item 41, on Graves Lake Dock Improvements. Resolution approving plans, specifications, form of contract documents, engineer's estimate. Receive and file bids and designate the lowest responsive, responsible bidder as Cushman Escavation LLC, Chad Cushman, manager, for $2,427,498. Council Communication number 24-457. A is the approval of the, of contract and bond. Is there anyone wishing to speak to this? The microphone again, Ms. Councilman Coleman. You'll have two minutes to speak.
Hello, my name is Heather Armstrong. I live in Ward 2. I sometimes goes, go up there to Great Lake. And I know currently with the dock, it's not wheelchair accessible. It's very narrow and needs to be widened so wheelchairs and other people can use it too. So we need to make them ADA accessible. Thank you.
It will be ADA accessible. That's one reason that we're doing the improvements. Still with that?
And 41A?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Please vote.
Seven, yes.
Motion carries. That is the end of the hearings. It is now 5:13. The next item is item 24.
Did we have something from the consent agenda that?
That's what we're doing it right now.
Okay, okay. That is 20. Sorry.
Continuum of Care Build Application to the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development. Council Communication number 24-470. And I believe we have, we'll do the speakers first?
Yeah, I might just say it's.
First, and then we'll have the speakers come up.
It's my understanding that if I pulled it off, it would allow the speakers to speak now instead of at the end of the meeting. So I wanted to pull it off now. I can save my comments.
Okay, so I, we have the list of, okay, here it is. Jasmine Brooks. Well, these are routine items and they will be, well, one call, but we allow the public speaking consent item for three minutes each for a total of 15 minutes. So I would suggest if there's how many people that try to state a two to three, please state your name, address, or ward prior to providing your comments. So Jasmine Brooks is the first one I have down. You want to come up and state your?
Sorry, guys, my, my comments are going to be very short. My name is Jasmine Brooks, Sixth Avenue Corridor, 1709 Sixth Avenue, 50314 in Des Moines. Sixth Avenue Corridor is going to rescind their decision to make a public comment at this time. So we are going to let community residents speak. Thank you.
Kathy Helstrom.
Kathy Helstern, 803 Hickman Road. I am the president of the Riverbend Neighborhood Association. Madam Mayor, council members, in reference to what project this application for a grant would be for, I want to encourage everyone involved to exercise caution when considering the Holiday Inn at 1056th Avenue for use as a high density, low income housing plus services site. We can all agree that central Iowa has a housing issue. And there is strong evidence that housing plus service projects are very helpful in improving outcomes for vulnerable populations. I believe that in the hands of Greater Des Moines Supportive Housing, a well-planned housing plus services program would be a benefit to our city. We have been told that the Mercy Holiday Inn on Sixth Avenue checks off all the boxes for placement of a project like this. But I believe that the list of boxes is incomplete. It's missing the box for residual effects on a marginalized community. Putting this project in already disadvantaged communities of the 50314 inequitably clusters social services and creates an area of concentrated poverty, which could have negative effects on both current and new residents. Our neighborhoods are struggling daily to revitalize and create opportunities for growth for our resident families. And placing this particular project at what should be the gateway to our main commercial corridor will suffocate our revitalization efforts, not to mention the loss of hotel and event level revenues to our tax base. This isn't about excluding certain types of people from our neighborhoods. The people who would benefit from a project like this already do live in our neighborhoods. We see their need daily and we don't hide ourselves from it. This is about ensuring that central Iowa shares the responsibility for solving its societal issues rather than handing it off to communities that already struggle with resources and rarely have the opportunity to say no. We are shouldering all we can shoulder. Thank you.
Thank you. Holly Klotz.
I'm Holly Klotz, 1224 Ninth Street, speaking only for myself, not even for my household. Given what, the positives of this project potentially, this sounds great, okay? If it is well-run, if it lives up to its promises. I, I'm just not confident that there's enough long-term resources to make that happen. And if so, it's a, a bad idea for any neighborhood. I don't know one way or the other, and unfortunately, the council is having to figure this out in a very short period of time. So good luck, folks.
Thank you. Emily Osweiler.
Hi, I'm Emily Osweiler at 9015 Cowd and Drive in Johnston. I'm the CEO of Greater Des Moines Supportive Housing. Thank you for the opportunity to share about Greater Des Moines Supportive Housing, which is an experienced new nonprofit. While this site would be our first project, our staff team and board of community leaders have decades of combined experience working with this model and related expertise, including finance, marketing, real estate, and law. I'm a master's level social worker and have worked in the housing space for 20 years. The bulk of my resume is with the YMCA Supportive Housing Campus downtown. It was a collaborative effort among the YMCA, the City of Des Moines, and Polk County who acknowledged the importance for supportive affordable housing. I was there before its inception and got to be a part of all aspects of its creation, development, and operations. It has 140 units, and they've been full with a waitlist of over 100 people since it opened in 2011. And if you haven't heard of it, it's because it is quietly doing what supportive housing is supposed to do. They've had very successful outcomes. While I was there, 65% of residents were employed. The other 35% were retired, actively looking for work, or on disability. 90% increased and maintained their income over the first year, and everyone had a case manager. It's a diverse population, which is what creates community and makes it neighbors in a home. There's a large demographic of people in need of affordable housing, including veterans and seniors, which is our fastest growing population. As you know, there's a documented need for more housing and housing with supportive services. We will fit in between permanent supportive housing for chronically homeless individuals and low-income housing without supportive services. While the services of the entire housing continuum are needed, we are not a shelter. We are not a recovery program. We are not public housing. We are not a public meal or food site where people who don't live with us will be coming and going. Let me tell you what we are. We will serve people who have an income up to 60% of the area median income, which is about $47,000 a year. We are housing plus services. So what is that? It's one solution to multiple needs. Housing, permanent, no time limit housing. People will sign a lease, pay rent, and build a rental history. They will have their own private studio apartment with a deadbolt and a peephole. Apartments will be furnished and include a bathroom, kitchenette, and washer dryer. Plus services, we will have onsite and wraparound supportive services available to all residents. These will include case management, rental assistance, transportation assistance, a pantry for food, clothes, hygiene, household items, and groups and classes for job training, financial literacy, life skills, and more. We look forward to many partnerships that will all be a piece of providing these services. Our campus will have security features, including 24/7 staff, restricted access, and cameras. It will be a dry campus with a no weapons policy. People who have felony convictions and violence against another person.
Thank you.
Won't pass the background check.
Carrie Wardeman.
Good evening. My name is Carrie Wardeman. I'm the executive director of Home, Inc., located at 1618 Sixth Avenue. Simply want to express appreciation to Mayor and Council for considering support for the application for this project. Emily said everything that she needs to say. The only thing that I want to add is that we're constantly faced with challenges and problems that are contributing to the homelessness population issue. Home, Inc. constantly has folks sleeping in our vestibule that we have to ask to leave every day. So these folks are already sleeping outside in our corridor. The best thing that we can do is to take hold of any solutions that are offered to our community, grasp on those, and move forward with solutions instead of continuing to build up problems. So I appreciate your consideration of this. I know it's a long path, but thank you so much.
Thank you. James Beal.
Good evening, Mayor Bozen and council members. My name is James Beal. I'm the president of Greater Des Moines Supportive Housing. I'm still on the board with Emily Osweiler, who spoke a few minutes ago. I just wanted to express my appreciation for the folks in the city staff and everyone who helped us put this application or will be helping to put this application together. I completely understand the concern citizens about sustainability. This is a big part of this. Just to be clear, we understand this vote to be for our application for a grant from HUD, which will bring approximately 5 million, or could bring $5 million into this situation in Des Moines, which would be critical for our rehabilitation for the Holiday Inn or, or any other project that we might encounter. So again, I just appreciate your consideration and thank you.
Thank you. I, that was the last of our speakers, so I will turn it over to Councilman Coleman.
I, I would like to make some comments. I, I think most of us have a significant amount of admiration for Des Moines Supportive Housing and the experience that Emily has had doing good things for people in our community. I, I want to tell the council and many of you, I've had the chance to say this. I've been in front of a couple of neighborhood groups the last couple of weeks, month and a half, and been asked about this and was, was frustrated because I never seemed to have the most up-to-date information. And every time I spoke to them, I promised the neighbors that we'd have a public process. You know, normally in a project this big or, or significant, there'd be zoning changes or, or other requirements where we would notify the neighbors, engage the neighborhood group. I appreciate and, and, and really value that Emily has worked hard the last couple of weeks to meet with people. In fact, we were able to meet with the neighborhood presidents of Cheatham Park and Riverbend Friday till after 7:00 PM, I think. Stole everybody's Friday night, but it was really important that we do that. At that time, I hadn't even read the grant application. It, it's not even final yet. It's, I saw the rough draft today. We approve a letter from Scott. It's called a commitment letter. Those documents scared me and it put me in a position of feeling like I haven't been, we haven't given the neighborhood as transparent information as we should. For that reason, as much as I really hope that this facility can find a home in Des Moines and can serve the people that most need it, I, I have to balance kind of being a leader and representing the neighbors. And I feel like the neighborhood has not had a chance to engage enough with Emily and figure out how this can be a great project. I think, I think I know my council colleagues and friends up here well enough to know this is probably going to pass tonight. But I still think there's a possibility that we continue to work together to make it as, as good as it can be. I, I would, I wish we weren't voting on it tonight and that we would have had time to engage and work together on the issues that are concerning to the neighborhoods. I hope this process over the coming weeks and months earns the support of the community, of the neighborhoods that are most affected by it, by the neighboring businesses. I hope that it earns my support. I look forward to supporting it someday. But I think we have to know much more about it before we say yes or no. And I, I know from experience, once the train leaves the station, it's really hard to pull it back, especially when you have $5 million coming into the community if we do get this grant. And so on, on, on process, I'm not going to support it tonight. But I hope the city continues to work and help me engage with the neighborhoods so that we can deliver a great project that, that really meets the needs of the neighborhood.
I'll move item.
If you want to go, I'll move it.
I'll move item 24.
Second.
Okay, and would anyone else like to speak to this?
Well, I, I'd like to, I'd like to speak. And I, I respect Councilmember Coleman's concerns about process and, and neighborhood involvement and, and opportunity to engage. I want to at least speak from, from my experience because I, I first met Emily, I think, pretty early in my tenure as a council member. I think she reached out and offered to give me a tour of the YMCA Supportive Housing Campus so I could understand what was going on there and the work that was being done. And I came away really impressed from that tour. That's exactly the type of, I, you know, it fills a really important gap. And it was an incredibly well-run program with very strong results. And it's something that I have monitored since that time. You know, one of the things that, that, that sounds like is a concern of the neighborhood is, is sustainability of a program long-term. And one of the things that I think is a really good example, the YMCA Supportive Housing Campus has been sustainable long-term. But it was something that Emily, as a leader of that organization, built up. And it was something that was able to survive in a very similar fashion with the same type of results, even after she left. And one of the things since that time, you know, I, I had conversations with Emily as she left and was looking to, to do more and help fill this gap. And I will say, this type of organization with leaders like Emily are exactly what we need in this community. And, and I, I understand, but as a community, we need folks like Emily doing work like this in our community. And one of the other concerns that, that neighbors have expressed is the impact it has on development. And I think I can speak to that a little bit as well because I represent, I represent the ward that has housed the YMCA Supportive Housing Campus, which is similar in size, 140 units. Across the street essentially from where that is located, in my time on council, has literally seen millions of dollars of development.
literally seen millions of dollars of development go in there. So the YMCA Supportive Housing Campus has been compatible with and has been a complement to significant development in our community. So projects like this can house people, can be a contributor to the community, and, and can answer these questions. The other thing, and I know some of the timing of this, I mean, this is a stretch grant that we are applying for that on relatively short notice, and it's going to, if we're successful, bring resources into our community that will help fill a gap and help us be more successful in our efforts. But one of the things that I know about Emily and the board that she has built and the folks that she is working with, these are folks who are willing to engage and willing to problem-solve, and if given a chance and open minds, I, you know, I think this is not the end of a process. This is the beginning, and I know they will engage and work with neighbors and attempt to address neighborhood concerns and be, be compatible with, with the needs of the neighbors while they are meeting an important community need. So based on the experience that I have, I'm comfortable supporting this, and I hope folks will engage with the Greater Des Moines Supportive Housing with an open mind, because I think we want to encourage folks to try and build projects like this in our community and to work with them when they are open to working with, with the public.
I think you make great points, and I actually think you make a point that, and maybe better than I did, that had we had time and engaged, maybe a lot of those messages could have been conveyed and people, people could have learned and heard more about it. I think, I think the timing of this federal grant made it really, really hard, and I understand everybody's trying to make the best decision when there's an opportunity to do something transformational, but I think in, in this case, because I've stood in front of them, I, I want, I want to stand with the neighbors, and I hope that my no vote just pre, make sure that we have a process that, that everybody engages in so that we can talk about how this can be a good project for the neighborhood and, and that it can bring value.
Mayor, may I make a comment?
Yes.
This council went through three very challenging hearings regarding the camping ordinance, and if we as a city heard anything, it was what can we do to help the homeless and provide security for people, for our neighbors who don't have it? I am very concerned about the future access to federal funds, and I would remind all of us that this action is being done only so that this body can submit for this grant. They have a long way to go. I have confidence in Emily. When I ran for this office, I met with her because I heard of the glowing comments about her success with the Y program. I would like to be part of the process to at least allow them to go to the next step. Thank you.
Anyone else wanting to speak to this? I just want to say that I think that sometimes the timing, this came up very, very quickly, and this is truly just the application to apply. There is no guarantee. There's only 25 in the whole country that are going to be given out, if dollars are still given out. So I think this is just our step, our obligation to give an opportunity, because there's still a long road to go, even if you get the grant to any revitalization or whatever, and that will give everybody time, I think, to have discussion, work through any issues, and hopefully make the project the best it can be. So with that, it's been moved in second.
Thank you, Mayor, for the time.
You're welcome.
Six yes, one no.
Motion carries. I just, I guess I was alerted that there was a technical problem in our streaming, and so after item 37, so if anybody wants to catch the earlier items, they can go do the pre-recorded, or the recorded show, so it will be available after this.
I feel like it's Netflix.
Huge, huge. I just wanted to let you know if anybody was watching from home that we have a little technical difficulty. Okay, the next item is amending Chapter 114 of the Municipal Code regarding the traffic regulation changes as follows. Council Communication Number 24-455. A, Parking Modifications. 1, 12th Street, Kiyosaka Way to Crocker Street. 2, Crocker Street to 12th Street to Kiyosaka Way.
I'll, I'll move item 42, 42A, 1 and 2, and pursuant to Rule 42A, move to waive the second, third reading.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Please vote.
Seven yes.
Motion carries. Item 43, amending Chapter 2 of the Municipal Code relating to the composition of the Access Advisory Board. Council Communication Number 24-466. A, Final Consideration of Ordinance Above. Waiver requested by Jim Hoff, Assistant City Manager, requires six votes.
I'll move 43, 43A.
Second. It's been moved and seconded. Please vote.
Seven yes.
Motion carries. Item 44, amending Chapter 18 of the Municipal Code relating to agricultural non-domestic animals and exotic, exotic animals and the types permitted.
I, I will move item 44, and pursuant to 42A, waive the second and third reading. I think we've had a lot of discussion about this.
Okay. It's been moved and seconded. Any other discussion? If not, please vote.
Six yes, one no.
Motion carries. With that, we'll go to item 45. It's a request to speak. Each speaker will receive three minutes to speak, and will be muted at the end of the three minutes. And I just want to read our comment. We provide speakers under the public speaking portion the opportunity to address the council for up to three minutes each, for up to 20 speakers for a total of one-hour agenda. Speakers will be called forward individually, and we ask everyone to please state their name and address or ward prior to providing comments. Please keep comments germane and avoid references to personalities or character attacks, as those types of comments do not contribute to the purpose for which this public forum exists. As a reminder to the council and the public, this public speaking time is not a time for the council to engage in discussion. Matters requiring attention will receive appropriate staff or council follow-up at a time after the meeting. Thank you for your support of Des Moines, and we appreciate your input. So the first one is Adam Burr.
Adam Burr. I'm from Ward 2. City council members, do you ask your neighbors when it's okay to mow your lawn? When it's okay to blow leaves from your driveway? When it's okay to blow your snow in the winter? I know I don't, and neither do my neighbors, just like the mariachi band that plays somewhere in my neighborhood every Sunday night, or the guy revving his motorcycle to the limiter at all hours, though he probably should. We're living in a world that many of us are still adjusting to. The events of COVID affected Iowans differently, but we learned a lot. We learned that, we learned what it's like when basic commodities like toilet paper aren't readily available and the prices of eggs triples overnight. There are 344,550 Iowans who face hunger, 110,500 of them being children. This is according to FeedingAmerica.org. Are we really so inconvenienced by a rooster in the city of Des Moines that we're willing to ignore how helping urban farms could play a role in addressing these hunger issues? Do you know the purpose of a rooster and a flock? A rooster is not just an inconvenience. He plays an essential role in maintaining a healthy, productive farm. I can't help but get dizzy thinking about how much money, time, and resources will be poured into enforcing this ordinance. After all, we're living in a post Peanut the Squirrel and Fred the Raccoon world. How do you plan to enforce these regulations? I've already seen multiple posts from people trying to rehome their roosters. Most of these birds will end up in shelters and be euthanized, not put to work on a farm or be used as food. Is this really what we should be spending our time on? Are we really so concerned about a few roosters within the Des Moines city limits that we're willing to distract ourselves from the pressing issues, more important issues for our hard-working police officers to deal with? What worries me a lot more is a robbery that occurred a block from my child's elementary school. Crime scene investigation was onsite at Get and Go at 7:30 in the morning. There were no updates. We have a 19-second update from KCCI, and that doesn't cut it. This feels like a distraction, a way to make us feel important while we're missing the bigger picture. I urge you to reconsider the priorities of this council. Let's focus on what truly matters. Thank you.
Ed Fallon.
Good evening, and thank you. Ed Fallon, 735 19th Street. Yeah, I do wish we'd had a second and third reading on that, but on the other hand, it's nice to have it done, even though I wish it was done differently, wish it wasn't done at all. And that's about all I'm going to say about chickens for now, because I want us to move on. We do have a food problem in the world, and we will have an increasing challenge with food here in Des Moines, and I, I thank those of you who have already talked with me, probably ad nauseam in some cases, about our, Kathy and I, the proposal we've made to, as we call it, eat the triangles. This is, again, a proposal to plant edible food, trees, fruit trees, nut trees, berries, specifically replacing those horrible orange snow fences with edible, edible shrubs like a blackberry fence. I know there's, seems to be some momentum to do something about that. That, to me, would be a great start. There are so many other things we need to do if we're going to achieve some level of food security in our city, and again, let's put this, again, I wish it had turned out differently. I wish we'd never had to have this debate about chickens, and I feel badly for our fellow chicken growers who might be impacted negatively by it, but yeah, it could have been a lot worse, so I'm glad we're at least beyond that. Let's talk about what we need to do to move forward and really make a difference for food security in our city. I mean, urban agriculture is a draw. I saw the story about folks in Orange City up in northwest Iowa who now can't raise chickens, and several families saying, "Well, if we can't raise chickens, we're moving." You know, this, this is actually going to be a real draw. It's a real part of what it means to be a vibrant community of, you know, functioning, a healthy, dynamic urban agriculture environment. So kudos for the work we've done. I love having the strawberries around this building. Let's keep it moving forward, and if we could do something about those triangles up there at Cottage Grove and, and ML King, that'd be a great starting point. Thank you.
Thank you. Kathy Burns.
Hi, Kathy Burns, 735 19th Street. Yep, we're here to beat the drum again about urban food production. So the, the chicken ordinance is, is wrapped up, and I appreciate that a lot of you expressed that you learned a lot about chickens in Des Moines and elsewhere. That's great. I was disappointed to see the noise ordinance app peg roosters as the bad guys. Got a problem with roosters? There's an app for that. But we were hoping it would be more generalized, like noise problems, because as Adam said, there are a lot of them. Speaking of urban food, I'm just going to say that, and this, this isn't about roosters, but it's just about local food production. Almost every day, we have evidence of the importance of growing foods sustainably. In many cases, smaller is better in food production. In yet another recall by the CDC due to E. coli infection and death this year, Grimway Farms, based out of Bakersfield, California, just recalled a couple of its carrot products. The Centers of Disease Control and Prevention reported that their carrots caused 39 E. coli infections, that as of Monday, yesterday, have resulted in 15 hospitalizations and one death across 18 states. Those are just the numbers that we know about. There are many people who have some of the really severe symptoms that I won't describe because it's impolite to say right now at a microphone what those are that didn't get it diagnosed as E. coli. A few details about Grimway Farms, and again, I'm, I'm juxtaposing this with good old-fashioned production of food in town, which seems to be a stigmatized thing in some minds still. Grimway has distribution to some of the largest retailers in the U.S., Costco, Kroger, Whole Foods, Albertsons, Des Moines-based Tyvee, among others. Grimway produces more than 42,000 acres of carrots in seven states, and they handle about 10 million pounds of carrots a day. And the carrots involved in the recall were the packaged whole carrots and also the packaged baby carrots, both labeled organic, I believe, at least the baby carrots were. Here's an example of how local businesses or chain businesses have responded to this recall, and again, this one involves McDonald's, similar to the sliced onion debacle that happened just a little bit ago. Per CBS News, McDonald's is spending $100 million to, quote, "accelerate recovery and support the most heavily impacted franchises." A total of $65 million will be invested in supporting franchises who have local, who have lost business. So let's be, let's have Des Moines be the food capital city of America.
Thank you. Suzanne Overton.
Suzanne Overton, 120 East Kirkwood. Jo is my representative. I just recently got involved with the council because of this issue. I think our current ordinance takes care of what we need. The good chicken owners are being punished because of neglectful owners that certain breeds of roosters are known to crow a lot. They crow because it's early morning. The one on the southeast side of me starts it off. There's probably eight roosters in my neighborhood. We don't have any complaints because I talk to my neighbor, but all this does is, we have the noise ordinance. So the guy that thinks there's a four-wheel track in his backyard and runs it all the time, are we eliminating him? The huskies that live three blocks away that bark when they don't get out like they're supposed to and attack my chickens, are we eliminating them? The roosters are being singled out. They provide continuity for my flock. With the ordinance with 30 of them, I can raise 10 to 15 to have food for my family. I shopped for backyard eggs long before I had chickens, and ironically, it was from a stray rooster. So if we proceed to, now I have to ask my neighbor, what about the neighbor that moves in? I've been there for 25 years, and all of a sudden, they don't like me and they don't like my rooster. You know, I will approach my, because pick a different breed that can live in the city. I mean, they're a vital process. I appreciate you stepping back from the last one you proposed, because it is food security. Every day, there's a different recall. You know, I'm the person that's going to talk to my neighbor and make sure that, don't, don't punish the good owners because of neglectful owners. You can come to my house anytime Jo's been to my house because of a different issue. I like to settle things with my neighbors before it becomes a council issue. If we all got along, none of you would have a job. I appreciate what you're doing. Linda, I really do. I'm not supposed to address anybody, but I love the east side. Even, I've always been a Des Moines resident, and I've been on the south side for probably 30 years. I love what you're doing for the east side, and it's great, but let's take care of the people that are being neglectful, just like the neglectful dog owners, the guy that runs his leaf blower at 3:00 AM. I mean, we all have those neighbors, and I appreciate what you are doing and taking a step back from, from what you originally proposed. Thank you.
Thank you. Heather Armstrong.
Hello, my name is Heather Armstrong. I live on the east side in Ward 2. My concern is about dogs, especially certain breeds like pit bulls, German shepherds, and some of these other dog, breed of dogs. They like to bite people, and they're not well-controlled, even if they're on a leash. I get real terrified of these big dogs, and a lot of times I hear them barking at night, and this is a huge problem. We need to like ban certain breeds of dogs in Des Moines, the ones that normally bite people and start barking in the middle of the night, because a lot of times I can hear them. Unlike the people that complain about the roosters, dogs are the worst thing. Thank you.
Thank you. That's the end of our speakers, so I would ask for a motion to receive and file.
Move to receive and file. Item A, B, C, D, and E.
Okay, been set, moved and seconded. Please vote.
Can I just ask that as part of the motion to receive and file that we refer the comments about the eat the triangle to the manager for a report back on process?
Sure, because I think everybody's probably sent it on to like, so we will get that Because I think everybody's probably sent it on to, so we will get that updated. I did too, so. I think everybody probably has. It's been moved and seconded, so please vote.
Seven yes.
Motion is approved. Okay, is there a second? All in favor? Aye. This meeting is adjourned.